Yeah, I'd like to call our meeting back to order. As the superintendent said, if you would please ask your question and then reserve comments for our meeting in December, we would appreciate it. I don't know how much the board can answer, based on what we've just heard also, but I'm sure the superintendent can answer your question. And if you would please come up to the center microphone, so it's being recorded, so that it'll pick everything up. First individual to sign up, Dawn Monroe. I must ask you, and you'll understand this, are you a Tanya Tucker fan?
Am I what?
Tanya Tucker fan? I'm looking at your email address.
Oh.
It's always been one of my favorite songs.
Actually, I was given that nickname as a child, so not particularly...
Came from Tanya Tucker, that's right.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
You have the board.
Thank you. My questions are actually gonna kinda be twofold for both Dr. Markley and our VIF expert, and I apologize, I cannot remember your name. And it's tailored more towards option three that was presented. I think one of the big pieces of this puzzle, from my opinion, is the ability to offer this program district-wise, and be able to expand it to a lot more families. And so, what I wanna ask our VFI experts, and Dr. Markley, you as well, is I've heard mixed messages with regards to how the middle school expansion might feel. And what you described in scenario three, that we would feel uncomfortable sending sixth graders to a new school, well, most middle schoolers go to a new school, right? And aren't we gonna be soliciting for additional sixth graders to join them? And how does that, how has that worked or felt with some of the other K through eight expansions, to be able to offer that to other out-of-district middle school families? Because if only 25 percent of their day is focused on any type of language, how are they gonna feel awkward? How are they gonna feel uncomfortable? So what have you done in your other schools, and how has that felt? And what scares you with them going?
Alright, so I'll take my part first, and I'll let her talk about her experience. For me, the concern is that I end up with a school where I've got immersion in first grade, immersion in sixth grade, sort of as bookends. And I think if the whole program comes, that sixth grader sees a fifth grader right behind them, in terms of, that's an immersion, they've got somebody at every grade level along the way. I think that if sixth grade comes by itself, it really starts as a, as a school within a school in Williston, and that addresses sort of your concern about, I mean, your question. I think i-if it comes by itself, as sort of an isolated group, then it needs to be part of that, at least grow, start in that middle school piece by, at Williston, as sort of a program within that middle school. And as far as the expansion piece, yeah, I think we can add kids to this program if we're, by offering a second language for those students who might wanna come in, who may decide, okay, I didn't go through immersion Spanish, and there may be some fifth graders at Gregory, who say, well, great, maybe I can pick up a, start taking the second language, the Chinese language, picking up at a piece, or some of those ELL pieces. And that's the best option, is if sixth grade comes by itself, is I build it enough so that it's almost, it's expanded considerably.
But why wouldn't Spanish be one other one of those languages? I mean, if you already have resources in there teaching Spanish, why...
Oh yeah, I mean, Spanish piece is still there.
But so still, again, that's a point in time, and you tell us if this is something that's happened with your other schools, that, you know, an up and rising sixth grader who hasn't had any language exposure at all, could join into the program at that point, and potentially learn Spanish introductory, or Chinese, whichever they prefer, and 75 percent of the time, they're still interacting with all the other kids during their core classes, like a regular middle school does.
But that 25 percent Spanish for those kids who are in immersion is much more intense than the starter Spanish piece.
Correct, and you would have to have two different levels of Spanish offering, at least. So have you guys done that, and how has it worked?
All I can say is she explained it perfectly. That really is how you can bring additional students in who haven't been in the program, but who are excited about the opportu-the early opportunity to get a more intensive foreign language class than they could perhaps in another middle school. If you already have the teachers on staff, that's usually an internal staffing and scheduling kind of question, where you can offer Spanish 1A to sixth graders, who are in the same math class as your immersion sixth graders, who are taking Spanish at a completely different level. So, that's very viable, and it's kinda a good way to build the middle school program, because numbers drive everything. So you wanna have enough kids in your middle school program to have, you know, grounded staff.
Let's go into one question, I won't ever get through this. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Neil Anderson is our next speaker.
Alright, I'm Neil Anderson, this is, can you hear me? And I have a daughter in the immersion program, it's in second grade. Mr. Hayes, I have a bunch of questions, so I'll try to reduce it quickly, down to just stuff that surrounds Forest Hills. And that would be, and you know, I don't think you're gonna be able to answer these questions tonight, but hopefully, it's something that you can get between now and December as you make your decision. And it's not for commentary, so all the ups and downs I'll leave out, that we've been through the last 11 years, but what will the EOGs look like at, at, at Forest Hills once you extract this program? You know, I'm worried that we're having a whack-a-mole kinda thing, you know, we'd make this better, and then what happens to Forest Hills? What impact will it have on parent volunteer levels at Forest Hills? When you register, you have to, say you're volunteer, and you know, that's, that's a piece of the puzzle there. What percentage of them are parents in the immersion program, is what I'm getting at, that will just be suddenly, all, you know, all the way through the whole school be extracted? And lastly, what, you know, the PTA, you know, the contributions to the school, what does that look like, when you pull out that? So, I just worry about the heart and soul of the school being pulled out, and what does Forest Hills look like with plan number one? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to comment?
Well, I would tell you that anytime that parents are in the school, when those parents move on to middle school, some of those same questions come up, there are parents behind them who step up and fill those leadership roles. As far as scores, in terms of immersion, the immersion students are outperforming the students who are not in immersion. That's been clear, and I think the data shows that that happens. The school average is, for example, third grader reading was 62 percent, two immersion classes were 86 and 94 percent, so they were above the school average in those two classes. And they were about 40 to 50 percent in the classes that weren't.
Okay. Next, Paige Thomas. Hello.
Hi. I would just like to hear a little bit about specifics on what kinda professional development and in-depth support for our teachers and administrators, and what kinda sustained manner would be delivered to those people, to ensure a seamless transition, whatever model is chosen.
Sure. Dr. Smith, you wanna talk about the PD piece?
Well, and actually, if I could refer to, and that's, because primarily, the professional development that's provided, or VIF is provided through slides. And I will, I'll be very brief.
The microphone, so you'll be picked up and recorded.
Sure. And I will be very brief. VIF has a very comprehensive professional development plan for immersion teachers across the state. That plan is in place, it's a multi-year development program. Teachers often go on weekends to VIF for professional development in the course of the year. In addition, there are other program managers like myself, who make regular visits to classrooms, and work with principals and teachers to help coach new teachers. We create mentor programs, so that teachers who have longer experience teaching in US schools become mentors for new international teachers. There's a very well-thought-out program already in place for professional development. Thank you.
Can I go? Okay. Thank you. Tara Tatum.
I just wanted to ask again if you could confirm the amount that it would cost to keep the program at two different schools, and if there would be a plan to put an immersion coordinator at Gregory?
Sure. Now, the cost, if you were at two different schools, we've estimated, a rough estimate is 50,000 now, by, for the board, we'll have an exact...
For school?
Fifty thousand? No, for, for about both schools.
Okay.
Because, I mean, you've already got a lot of materials in place at one school, so it's not a case of having to duplicate two schools. So if I'm running it at two places, it's gonna be about 50,000 to upgrade that, to upgrade that program. But I'll have a more exact figure for, for December 1st.
Okay.
Now, in terms of a coordinator, we've got our VIF consultant who we work with, the principal at each, at the building is part of this. We also added a position this year, is Saber Robbins' position, working under instruction, that works with our magnet school programs. So working with those programs becomes part of her responsibility as well, in helping to oversee those two programs. Dr. Smith, anything you wanna add?
We've had that in conversation about having someone on site, but looking at the existing resources at both schools and supporting it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Blair.
Good evening, everybody. Hi again. As you guys know, I have my first grader at Forest Hills, and my question, I appreciate the different options that were given, and that there might be different, different things to consider, but what I wanna know is, with the Gregory parents, they really love their STEM program, and so, is there a potential to, I know STEM is expensive as it is right now, but is there a potential to keep parts of that as, if that school moves to an immersion program, to help meet what their needs and their desires are too?
The intent has never been to take away from the STEM program that's there for those kids, but if they're there, we'll support the STEM program for those students who are there. But with, with two STEM schools, I think they're competing with each other for, for those students. And so we'll continue to support them at the level they're at, plus try to add some of the foreign language pieces to what they're getting. So it's, we're not taking anything away from a student who's at Gregory. But when you look at the numbers coming in the kindergarten, 51 is a very small kindergarten, it's barely over, over two classes, you look at the size of the, the overall school's 393, sustainability long-term in that program, it's not, it's, it's not there. I mean, the folks who are there who love their program, and I wanna continue to support those that are there, but I also wanna see that school grow back to what it was, and I think immersion is the path for those students to do that.
So I guess, is there portions of that STEM program, without actually having it called a STEM program, that could be maintained even after those students matriculate out? I guess was my question.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's some pieces that, I mean, we're not, no equipment's being taken out of the school. If you go to the school now, the technology that there is gonna stay there. They're a one-to-one school in terms of their iPads, that stays. So those aspects of it aren't going away. We're not gonna say, okay, you're no longer a STEM school, so all those iPads go someplace else. That's not happening. So they've got some things there, that, that have been put there technology-wise, that are, that are gonna stay there. If you took the tour of the school on that Saturday, you saw the, the school broadcast room, it's one of the nicer ones from elementary school. Those things are, aren't going away from that school. So nothing's gonna be packed up and shipped off someplace else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Burton.
Good evening, thank you first of all for listening to us and our concerns and questions. I have two questions. One is, if we have two immersion programs, does VIF offer a discount for a feeder program? And would Forest Hills be a feeder to Gregory? And my second question might be so simple for you guys, but it, I don't know the answer, and no question is a bad question, in my opinion. Why, what would prevent transportation from being an opportunity to provide kids, so kids could have transportation to Forest Hills, if it were a K through five program?
If it were a total immersion school?
Yes, sir.
Could transportation be provided to Forest Hills?
Yes, sir.
Well, as a magnet school, I think that's, something's been discussed, but yes, that would be a possibility.
Okay.
Alright, now the other two. I have, VIF, do you offer like, large group discounts?
I'm not the business manager, so my handle is good today.
Who has, I guess you guys will get back to us on that?
And then the feeder piece, yeah, it would seem logical that if I've got two tracks of immersion at elementary, they merge at middle school.
Okay. So the cost, then, you can get back to us on that? Like, how?
Yeah, we'll talk to the actual sales folks at VIF.
I can't imagine this is the first time in the history of immersion program that this issue has come up at some point.
Yeah.
So I would imagine they have some, they could be, they could work with us.
Kristy Duke, I think. Good evening.
I'm gonna ask a question again about Gregory and the STEM program. My question is, with the STEM program like it is right now, kind of like an elective-based class, where it's offered in a core cla-in an anchor class and a science class, which is how STEM is basically presented to the children, and with the broad amount of activities that are offered in the STEM program, by way of Science Olympiad, or by way of the STEM nights, by way of the, the science math, the science, all of the different competitions that they have going on right now, what is the problem with incorporating that into the current Spanish immersion program, if it was to come over to Gregory? What would be the problem with allowing those, since you guys, since they would probably need an elective anyway, once they get out of the kindergarten, and they will have that 50/50 component, what would be the problem in having STEM still there, which is a wonderful technology-based program, and, which basically is not in competition with Rachel Freeman's STEM program? What would be the problem in incorporating that, so that way both of them can run simultaneously and at the same time? They can get the science technology portion of it, as well as getting the Spanish immersion part of it, and they can get both of them. So when they leave and go into the ele- in the middle school part of it, they're gonna be well-rounded. You have science, math, technologies, with Spanish immersion. Why is that not an option, or possible?
At this point, anything's possible. Nothing has been decided.
Is that something that can be done?
We're, we're, we're taking notes, I mean, it's, anything's a possibility.
Well, I guess my question is, has, has that been looked at as an option, to adding both of those at the same exact time, instead of phasing out the STEM program, when the last of the children who are there are not in, are not in the Spanish immersion program, when they leave, basically STEM will leave with them? Why not leave it there and incorporate it into their elective classes?
Well, part of it is, we offer STEM pieces at all of our schools, and that's part of what's driving that, that I think is not bringing those folks to Gregory now. We've got a, if you look at technology and programming in all of our schools, STEM is incorporated into curriculum at every school, and so there's not, there's not enough beyond STEM that's bringing those kids to the schools. Dr. Smith, anything you wanna?
I would compare with you, Dr. Markley, at all of our elementary schools, we do of course offer the science, we do of course integrate technology, and of course, they deliver math. And there are other schools within the district where we have STEM nights, and STEM becomes sort of a focus. But for Gregory, it is their central focus, that's what their magnet is built upon. And what we're proposing is truly expanding that. And so, what you would see is, some of those resources eventually, that go to supporting the STEM, would be transitioned in other ways to support the magnet program. But what I would say is, the elements of STEM would continue, because that is an integral part of all of our science curriculums.
Thank you. And my last question would be, why would it upset the, I guess, why would it upset the Forest Hills parents so much if STEM went to a all Spanish immersion program there? And why is not, and why is the fact that it would be upsetting Gregory parents, for Gregory's school to go to, to become an all Spanish immersion program, why is that not problematic, or even looked at as problematic? But it's okay to not take Forest Hills, to make them a all Spanish immersion program, because of the fact that they don't wanna upset certain people if they've done that? But why is it okay to do Gregory that way? Regardless of the fact if they are a, a magnet school, so it's a choice school, but the parents who put their children there is for the choice of STEM, so why does it, why is it not problematic, that those parents would be very upset that this school's gonna go to all immersion, and no longer STEM?
We're not, we're not taking STEM away from students who are at Gregory already. We're gonna continue to support the students that are there with STEM, and, and it's a choice program for them.
Can you answer the question?
For now, offering a second option, or a revised piece for those coming into the kindergarten portion of it. And I, I really think that the Spanish immersion program will re-energize that school, and bring more of the folks who are around that school into that school.
But the question was, the comment was earlier that we didn't wanna take Forest Hills into a completely all immersion school, because of the fact we wanna upset certain people. But you're willing to take Gregory and make that an all immersion school, regardless of the fact that it's gonna upset certain people? Why is one option okay, and the other one totally isn't?
Because at the end of the day, coming to Gregory for every parent, whether they want, whether they're there for the STEM program, or they come for the immersion, is a choice piece.
And isn't Forest Hills a choice piece as well? Because that is also a choice school. It's a lottery school, just like Gregory's.
No, it's a choice and a district school.
Right, but it's a lottery school.
Some of those students are districted for that school, specifically, so it's not, it's a combination of both.
And part of this is to build out, and, and part of what we're seeing is, this is such a popular program for folks outside of the Forest Hills area, that we need to find a way to ensure that all students in the district can, can get to this program. And Gregory, which is a magnet and choice program, offers our best chance for expansion.
Thank you.
Ashley, Ashley, I'm not sure. I'm not gonna even attempt.
It's, it's just Ashley.
Starts with a B.
I just wanted to ask about something that I heard mentioned at the first Forest Hills parent meeting, and also, I guess, a combination of things I've heard over the years. I'm an out-of-district immersion parent, and I heard a parent present an idea, she moved from another state where immersion is very popular, and there were several elementary schools in their district that had immersion programs, and fed into a middle school program. You know, New Hanover County is very large geographically, I drive 30 minutes to take my child to immersion. I think it would be a very popular option, to be able to offer immersion in different elementary school settings that are closer to children's homes. So, I guess I just wanted to remind of that option, that I thought was a very good idea brought up, and I've also heard mention that Portent Lake Elementary would have an immersion component, I've heard friends at Bradley Creek say they were looking at something like that, so I just kind of wanted to know.
Traditionally, this school, this district has supported one district-wide magnet school in terms of numbers. And so, while we're, geographically, we're actually the third smallest district in the state geographically, so...
Second.
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 Excuse me.
Area-wise, we're number two.
Second, number two.
Second to the smallest.
Okay.
Second smallest in the state.
I didn't say that right, you're right, thank you.
You did not. Act right.
So, and if this program at Gregory, if we outgrow Gregory, which is a school that can hold 700, then I think we look at a, a second school. I think we build one school out completely, and if the interest is beyond that one school, then we open another. I think that's in Charlotte, it started with one, it got more popular, even beyond the numbers that school could hold, and now there's seven. I think to try to build out seven tiny pockets around that, it doesn't, it isn't the way to build that program out, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Derek Bickle. Good evening.
I have a fourth grader and a first grader at Forest Hills. I'm a big fan of option one. We went Saturday to open up the school, my kids were excited, they wanted to go to school there that Monday. It's a beautiful school.
Thank you.
It has a lot of technology, science labs are there, the TV studio is great. I think if you're gonna chop this program up and put it in different schools, I think you're going to kill the program. I guess a question I have for you, could you tell us the advantages of a K through eight program, rather than a K through five, and splitting that up? Or are there...
Well, I can speak from my perspective and experience, that middle school immersion programs struggled to really gain a toehold when they were subsumed in a regular middle school program. There are a lot of conflicting demands, middle schools can be big and complex, and to have sort of the international character and, and climate of an immersion school, it was easier to preserve that through the middle school years by making a K eight. And that has been the decision in, in many districts and in many schools, for that reason. It's certainly possible to have a standalone immersion school within a school, and, and offer the same program, but the program often would have a very different feel. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vance Pauli. Good evening.
I have two kids at the, at the immersion program in Forest Hills right now, second and fourth. I guess my question is, if this is a, if this is such a popular program, that you have to open it up to the entire county, and our public school system is intended to accommodate students from the entire county, why do options two and three even need to be put on the table? Because it seems that that only addresses the concerns of some parents of one school versus the parents of the entire county.
One of the reasons we did the multiple forums was to get input from parents from, from both, and so I felt that I was obligated to share some of that input that I've gotten with the board, so they could see all of those options.
Thank you.
Kelly Lukehouse?
Go in once.
Kelly?
Go in twice.
Did I miss pronounce her last name so much that they don't know?
No.
Ben Rigby.
I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader at Forest Hills Elementary School. When we first were talking about this proposal, one of the things we heard was that the K eight model really had the research behind it. It was by far the most effective instructional program for a language immersion program. And so, my question involves the variables that make that so, so effective. And in particular, I'm wondered about, you know, the variables that include the kinda cohesion of the K eight model. And in other words, with all the students and the teachers being together in one building, the synergy that's involved, and then, and you know, the, the fourth grade teacher's kinda feeding into the fifth grade and sixth grade, how much of the efficacy is a product of that cohesion of being all together? I, I would like to know from our consultant about that.
Sure. I think she addressed a little bit about it when she talked about those standalone programs, but I'll let her come up and sort of talk about that from...
I think you said it really well. There are factors in building teams, of people who work together because they're really passionate about a mission for a school. That's true in any high-performing school, and it's certainly true for immersion programs, but being able to track kids over the course of nine years gives you a lot of power instructionally too, because you really know your kids, certainly as a building principal. I really knew my eighth graders, because I'd had them for a really long time, and so had the teachers in that building. Sometimes we knew kids better than they wanted to be known, but that's, that's actually quite a good thing. And it does really give a different climate to an internationally-focused school.
And it, would it be true then, that option one would be the only option that would actually be true to that, that model we're just talking about?
Not necessarily. I think it depends on the team, depends a lot on the leadership.
Okay. In terms of like, the cohesion of having the, the students and the, the teachers all together in one place, there is, in other words, is that not a, a variable that's crucial to the success of the, of the K eight model?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Because I think you're talking about in any of these models, continuing, for example, with the students in the STEM program, you wanna have a whole school, even if some of the kids are in immersion, then some of the kids are in the STEM program. So you certainly have several years of having a dual population of, of one kind or another, no matter which of these models you pick. And you'd want definitely, within those classrooms in an immersion program, to have that, that feeling of focusing on the language and the culture, and everything that goes with an immersion program. And at the same time, whoever the school leader is, has to deal with everybody who's in that school, and make it a successful experience, whether they're in the immersion program or not. And just about every transition of these programs into K eights has involved having dual populations, phasing one thing out, bringing another thing in, hybridized... dual populations, phasing one thing out, bringing another thing in, hybridizing certain things, just because of, it's all driven by the kids who serve.
Okay. My question didn't actually have anything at all to do with the dual populations. It, it had to do with the, I guess, the fidelity of the, of the research in terms of what makes that K eight model more effective. And so I was asking if option one was actually the, the option that, that gave us that fidelity to the research in terms of what made?
It's the only option that actually puts them all in the same building at the same time continually.
Right. And is that a part of what makes the K eight model effective is folks being in the building together?
I think she stated that any of them would be successful, but it might take a little bit longer to get the groups together.
But in terms of your question, having that continuum in one bill, in one building, I think obviously provides support that you wouldn't get if you were trying to start it at two bookends, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Evelyn Bryant? Evelyn Bryant? Karina Hill?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm a parent from Forest Hills. I actually came to the United States eleven years ago and didn't speak the language at all, so immersion is huge for me and my daughter started in kindergarten. And right now she's fluent bilingual in both languages, so I see the value of the immersion program. But my question mainly is very simple. I'd like to know with this new proposal, what would be the consideration of the new administration? Would you consider someone with maybe a multicultural background, bilingual, or someone that can maybe provide extra support for our international teachers and people that are coming overseas? So that will impact the quality and the academic sense? And the, yeah, I can see that that probably will impact in general the level of the program. Not so much of quantity, but quality. So let's say we start in kindergarten, but then we look at a child in second grade and is flu, fluent in both languages with the exception of maybe having a parent at home that speaks Spanish or not. So mainly is, would you consider an administration bilingual or with a understanding of coming from outside?
I appreciate the question, but I'm going to say what I've said at every meeting when it comes to the personnel side of this. This is a discussion on the, on the merits of the program. Once the board decides which option they choose, then we can have a discussion about the personnel side. So I, I don't want, I don't want personalities to detract from the conversation, from the importance of what I think the program is.
Okay. That part was important to me. Thank you.
Amanda Boomechey?
Good evening. I think you already know, but I have a kindergartner and a second grader at Forest Hills in the immersion program. And I have a few questions, but one of them is very important, so I'm going to definitely ask that. But I have one very quick question that I didn't understand from option three. And that was, is that a one-way immersion or is that two-way dual immersion?
I think if you've only got one section at Forest Hills, it's got to be a ninety-ten program.
Okay, so the one class that's going to be Spanish is the only class for grade?
Is, would be immersion, not dual immersion, if that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, I cited, I misunderstood option three. Now I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah.
So my question is, is the county truly committed to creating a successful, long-term dual-language program? And what I mean by that is if you have a K eight program or if you have a really well-planned out K five program at one school or five schools, are you prepared to have bilingual office staff? Because if you have a two-way immersion program, necessarily half of your children come from a Spanish-speaking home. And the other half who don't come from a Spanish-speaking home will be bilingual within a couple of years. And so it's really important for them to be surrounded by that environment, not, and also so that you can speak with the families that are involved. Do you plan on having bilingual teacher assistants for grades K through two or at least kindergarten? And if so, do you have a plan in place to recruit and retain those teacher assistants? Do you plan on having bilingual reading and math interventionists? We don't have that currently at Forest Hills and I believe that may be part of the problem why we've had students that have to come out of the program, be pulled from the program because they don't have any support staff other than their one teacher or perhaps a teacher and a teacher assistant. Whereas the English-speaking children in the English-only classrooms do have a reading coach and do have interventionists that can work with them in the language of their instruction. And do you plan on having bilingual attenuant teachers?
Is this your last question?
This is all the same question. I'm just trying to clarify the amendment that the county has.
I'm counting like four in that one.
Yeah, we will remain if you have additional questions, but it really feels unfair to the audience. We've asked one question and I appreciate it.
Okay. So my question is?
What's your main question? I think all these fit into a category.
Is the county committed? Great. Is, I was trying to clarify my question, but if you can answer it without clarification, is the county committed to creating a successful dual-language program?
And the, the answer to that is obviously yes. And you can talk about, what, what did it look like at your school in terms of support beyond just the classroom teachers?
I don't want to keep you here all night. I don't know any school district that has bilingual interventionists. I don't know any school district that has bilingual interventionists.
Because you're, you're teaching students in both languages.
Right.
So an interventionist in terms of providing some of that special ed piece doesn't have to be a, a native Spanish speaker.
Right, but in K and Y, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk tonight or not. I know I'm usually not.
Why don't you hang around and we can have this conversation.
Yeah, I'd love that. Thank you. Okay. That was the, that was the response? Okay.
All right. I think that's the last one.
Yeah, as Dr. Markley stated, this, we'll be, additional comments, because there's a lot for everyone to digest between now and our December the first meeting. And you may sign up then under the call from the audience. I'm sure you'll have some other comments or questions you might have that.
So what I would ask the board tonight is process what you've heard and then let me know individually where you're at in terms of what you processed and the conversations. I mean, because I, I'm sure you'll get some more feedback from, from parents tonight via email or telephone calls. And so then we can, and be just kind of curious at some point, send me by an email which way you're leaning in terms of options to propose on the first.
Okay.
All right.
Motion due?
What?
Is that it?
I mean, meeting's on the first, so.
Sometimes we're down there.
Yeah, like I said, you can, if you want to schedule one-on-ones with me this week, next week, I'll be happy to sit down at some point and go through any additional questions you might have.
Individual board members can kind of get up with Dr. Markley, telephone, go over and visit, you know, whatever, before our December the first meeting. I'm sure we'll have ample time that night for discussion also.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I did. And Mrs. Kova seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We adjourn.
Folks, thank you for coming.